Site and building commission to order at 7:01 PM. Please join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, on nation, with visible liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. So before we get jumping into our agenda, I am going to go quickly through a little meeting protocol as I did last week, just as a reminder for myself as well as everyone else. So there are a couple of things that we need to, I need to remember to do on a regular basis. First off, if anybody is going to speak during public input, we're going to need to get their name and address because we do that in all meetings and it becomes a matter of record in the minutes. As we're going through the agenda, we're going to have different people speaking, going through whatever discussions we need to have, and we're going to stick with the people who will be speaking will be part of the project team. Now, sometimes we have people who are part of the project team who are part of, like, with the Board of Ed and school projects. Dr. Carver will often speak. Jen is here to speak today. So it's not always public site people or people who are part of the project team. There's also other people who are kind of part of the project team who are going to need to speak also. What we found out last week was, what I asked was to have people raise their hands when they wanted to speak so we could get some kind of good flow going. Yet when we were screen sharing and your little Zoom windows became tiny, I couldn't always see the raised hands. So feel free if you have to jump in and say someone has the hand raised or I have my hand raised if I can't see it up on the screen. And we're going to ask people to stick with the items on the agenda. Even though it's a regular meeting, we can add or subtract things from the agenda if we need to. However, we're going to stick with that and move along. Two things that I'm going to ask of, that I'm going to do, first of all, I'm going to tell you who's here in the room and I'm going to say who's on Zoom. Because not everybody has their name and their company. So we may not know who a person is, even if they had their full name, we might not know what company they belong to or what project they're part of. So I'm going to say that so we all know. And I would very much appreciate it if it's your turn to speak or you're going to speak, giving us an update on a project, whatever, that you turn your camera on. You can leave your camera off until then, but it's, I would vastly appreciate it if you put your camera on when you're going to speak. If you can't figure out your camera because of whatever device you're using tonight, please try to figure that out for the next meeting. Again, you could be, you know, off camera, turn your video off while you're waiting to speak, or if you're just listening and then if we need something from you when you speak. I know Downs was doing that last time. They put their cameras on when they were speaking. So I would very much appreciate that. So here we have public site members Gerald Roche, John Menti, Roy Steiner, me, Nancy Ryan, your chair, Kathy Galvis, our recording secretary, Evan Venager from STV, owner's rep on the training range and the school projects, and Jen, I'm going to say your last name, Marialle from Board of Ed, business manager for Board of Education. On Zoom, we have public site members, John Perna and David Olson. As I said, David Horvath may be joining us. He's busy with some work things and may join us a little later. And also ad hoc public site member from Police Station Training Range Project, Lieutenant Bob Durkin for school projects, Dr. Carver, superintendent of schools. For the training range also, we have Kevin Geit from Downs Construction and Mark Allen Jukonski-Hughes. And that's everybody tonight, I believe. But we'll keep an eye on the waiting room if anybody else joins in later. Okay, so we will start on through the agenda, public input. Again, if you're going to speak as a member of the public, you got to give us your name and address. 01 for public input this evening. Correspondence, nothing since, nothing came in that I know of since I checked here earlier today and Kathy didn't bring anything either. So we'll go into approval of meeting minutes and we have a couple to do. So I will make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from our special meeting of November 29, 2023.
I'll second that.
John Menti seconds. Does anybody have anything from those minutes that needs to be updated, changed, explained differently, et cetera? Everybody's good? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Done. I think Gerald needs to abstain. Perna might need to abstain. Who was, does he have that somewhere?
I'll check.
Okay. So we're good with that. And I will make a motion that we approve the minutes from special meeting of December 6, 2023. Need a second?
I'll second that.
John Menti seconds. Does anybody have anything on those minutes that needs to be clarified, changed, et cetera? All good? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good with that. Who, somebody wasn't here.
John Perna and Dave Olson.
He wasn't here last week, but two weeks ago he was.
Okay, and Dave Olson?
Yeah, and Dave Olson wasn't here last week. Yep. David Horvath was, because he was the one that kept telling me whose hands were raised when I couldn't see everybody. All right, so we're good with the minutes. Thank you. Moving into our old business, Police Station Training Range. Evan, what do we have for an update?
So Police Department Training Range, as we all know, we met on last week. Since then, we've, I have contacted Action Target and let them know exactly the plan for getting them their check. And there was contingent upon them giving us a date in writing that the MAU will be delivered on site. They had begun talking with Performance Mechanical. Performance Mechanical, according to Downs, was actually out on site yesterday taking measurements, but they still have not been able to provide us with the data that the MAU actually went on the pad. But we are seeing incremental progress on that. Performance Mechanical showing up on site is a very good, very good sign that they're being actively engaged. Kevin also sent me an update regarding the Unistrut. They look like they're performing ahead of schedule, which is excellent news. They are looking to wrap up the Unistrut installation end of this week, which would allow them to fill in the CMU wall. And hopefully if we get some warm weather again, that'll allow them to do the water broom coating because that is a temperature dependent application.
I think the closing up the wall, I thought that Action Target, and Kevin, you may know this more, I thought Action Target needs to get a forklift in to lift the baffles up to the ceiling. That's why the biggest thing for getting the wall opened up. So that's dependent on Action Target being there. Kevin, do you?
Yeah, so there is a note on the documents that, that the Action Target's supposed to give like the okay based on, I don't know what the note says verbatim, but it's basically them giving the okay that it's okay to close up. You know, I'd say the majority of their equipment is within the range, so I feel that we're at a point where we can close it up. I mean, Evan, I don't know if you can reach out to them. I mean, I don't know if they've been on site, but it's just one of those things that, you know, we don't want to wait until springtime to close up the wall. And I mean, that's not kind of what we're going for.
Well, yeah, we wouldn't like to get it closed sooner rather than later and they could make a little tarp bubble over it and put a heater in there. But I'm remembering that part of the reason why we made that hole in the wall as, you know, to temporary block was not just for them to get the equipment in, but also to have a forklift to raise the equipment into place.
That was part of that.
So you're going to need to definitely check with them and make sure, we don't want to close that wall up and then open it again.
Not just sure they're getting it in.
Right, it was, yeah, I think they needed to have a forklift inside to lift that stuff up and attach it to the Unistruts. So we're going to have to get a definite clarification on that before we go and close up the wall.
I'll get, I'll confirm with Action Target insulting. You got to get that in writing. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, everything in writing.
So anything else? Because there, you said there, I had a schedule of getting the Unistruts going. So Kevin, does that mean the roofing would also get done if you're getting that Unistrut done?
Yeah, so the roofer has been on site. He was on site today. They have like, I'd say 40% of their work done and I'm confident that this will all be wrapped up by Friday.
Which would be great because I think the next rain that we have scheduled is Monday.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly picked like a good week for them to get out there and get this work going, so I'm definitely happy about that.
Yeah, that's great. And then what left us Downs have to do? Nothing until Action Target gets going, right?
So Nancy was able to provide me with the names of the IT, the low voltage and security vendors. So Kevin, I know that you're looking for, you're to provide the path for the, for the card readers, the conduit, and we need to get them out there to confirm your route. So I'll get them coordinated and hopefully get them out to you so you could put that, lay that conduit.
Yeah, that'd be good because we have, I had the electrician scheduled to be back out next week, so that'd be an ideal time. And what about the temperature controls? We have two split units that are installed with motorized dampers that, you know, we don't have any kind of controls.
Yes. I'll, I'll send a note to Rob Constance again and tell him that you're closer, you're ready, but I'll just put your contact information in there so he could contact you and coordinate.
Okay. That'd be fun.
I'm Lieutenant Durkin.
Yeah, so Lieutenant Durkin.
Yeah, one other thing, I'm not sure if they brought him in or not, but there was three or four more pallets that were outside of the range that the guy from Action Target, when he came, he didn't put them in the range. So I just remind them of that before they tell you that they can close up that wall because I think there were four pallets still outside.
Yeah, so it sounds like we can't close it up until, I mean, they need a forklift apparently to do a lot of their work, so.
Right, I just want them to be reminded of that. They don't go ahead and give you the green light and those pallets are still sitting out there.
Sure.
Those pallets have equipment on it that's all wrapped up, right?
Yeah, apparently there were things that could be left outside according to the guy that was there.
Right, they, I think when they delivered the stuff, because they delivered it earlier than they were supposed to, because it was all wrapped up, they were just going to leave it on the pallets because they didn't have, they told us to get a forklift there and put it in and we were like, we don't have a forklift. You guys, you're supposed to do it. So that's possibly why it's left outside, but that's a good reminder. Thank you.
Okay.
Else?
Ah, that's all set on my end.
Yeah, I don't think, well, we don't have a change in the budget quite yet because things are pretty much the same. We haven't gotten any other invoices in for the range. You're going to keep working with them to keep, kind of pestering them in a way. Send them even, send them photos if Kevin can get you some photos and say, look, we're all done. Get over here.
And I'm blind copying you and John on correspondence, so you guys see that. And we're keeping up.
Yeah. And I know people talked about, well, are we really going to get them to come before, during the holidays? And again, I think they want that thing out of their yard. Performance Mechanical has been there. And again, don't see any snow in the next two weeks, but we would really like to get it set in place before we start getting, who knows? We don't know what we're going to get. There's no predicting, so let's get it in place. We'll keep working on that. So either Kevin, I don't know if you have anything else for us or anything you need from us?
Quick question for Evan.
No, I'm all set on my end.
Okay.
I have a question.
Couple items that we're still waiting for a bid on or we're still waiting for a price or is that the, the voltage?
Yeah. That's what he was talking about.
I missed that. So where, where is that now?
So Nancy provided me with those set this evening, so I'll contact them immediately tomorrow morning, first thing, and we'll, we'll get them on board.
Yep. And John Perna said he had a question.
Yeah, did, did anybody contact Eversource on the load letter?
Yeah, so I reached out to Eversource early on and the original design of the police department took into account a, an MAU unit. So the loads were calculated for a unit, so we're all set.
Good. And then where are we with the incentive?
So we have all the paperwork filed with Eversource and we're just waiting for them to get back to us.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, John. Good reminders. All right, so I think we're good with the range and I just want to make sure I'm executing this and.
27th.
It's the 27th, all right. So since it's the 27th, if we need to do stuff, we'll have a meeting. Is that like, if there are things that we need to approve or get things moving forward? If it's all between, you know, Evan, Action Target, Kevin, getting things moving along and we don't need to, but if we need to, we will. So we'll keep you posted on that.
So just, so we decided that we would release a check, provided they give us a date in writing.
Correct, yes.
So once we get that date, we've approved that invoice, correct?
We approve the invoice and finance is holding the check. And it'll be ready to go as soon as they give us what we've asked for. Yeah, because I did talk to finance about that and they were, I thought it was a good idea, so.
And when I spoke to Action Target, I did mention to them as well that they could preemptively provide us with that invoice for delivery for us to consider to that. They did not get anything. The 77.
Yeah. We didn't get anything from them, so.
Why would they want?
I don't, yeah. I don't know. Whatever. Okay, any other questions from anybody? Good, we're moving along. All right, thank you. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Lieutenant Durkin. You can stick around if you want. Don't need, we'll see you again whenever we meet again. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, good night. So on to our school projects. So the Rockwell Johnson School, we're doing that first. We do have an update on the whole level spreader situation in which we were waiting for Sunburst to finish one part that was pointed out that hadn't been completed and they did do that.
Yes, they did.
And everything should be good like with SLR and land use and we're good to go.
Kathy, if you'd allow me to share, yes, SLR has reviewed pictures. I'm going to pull up in just a second. And they are fine with everything. The letter that they sent to the spring, or not, I'm sorry, not spring, the summer said their final approval was contingent upon this section of pipe being buried per the contract documents. Once that was completed, they would have no more issues. Land Use also sent us a letter in late August saying that they didn't care about the pipe being buried. All they cared about was that the detention pond was working as designed. So they are all set with approvals for, for those. So as you can see.
We're just going to.
Sunburst was out there. This is where that pipe was previously exposed to elements. They have buried it. They, and they seeded it.
Okay, but we're not going to see anything growing till spring. Will they come back and check, do you think, or we'll ask them to?
We could ask them to, yeah. We have, we have a one year warranty.
So then that's done. Yay.
That's done.
Yeah. So as far as the, we have two invoices to approve from Sunburst. I asked Evan to bring up. We've made a projected closeout budget analysis for us and then we're still waiting on the audit, I assume. That's a question for Dr. Carver.
Yes, I emailed, I emailed the Department of Administrative Services again. I did share with Jen that when I was in the, the system, I was pulling up some information and it indicated that we were in an audit stage, but I haven't seen anything from them officially. So I'm just waiting for a response at this point.
So does that involve them coming here to do things, looking at papers?
Um, yes and no. I mean, they revamped the whole system so that most of the information, all the invoices, the spreadsheets, all of the supporting documents have been uploaded throughout the project. So when we receive payments for them, so I imagine that they might come out, but I think it's, it's going to be much less than it has been in the past.
Okay. So we'll just keep waiting?
Yep.
All right, so invoices, like I said, we have two from Sunburst, which one of them, this one is dated July, which somehow, I don't know if we ever received it.
Right, so we didn't because the email that Sunburst had sent us had this invoice number. However, it was a repeat of the contents of the $9,800.
That we already paid.
We already paid for the费斯.
Right, okay, yeah. So, so I'll make a motion that we approve Sunburst invoice number 21909, dated July 24, 2023, for upgrades to the level spreader at Johnson School in the amount of $24,385.89.
Second.
John Menti seconds.
So question I have is this, so that was for the actual bulk of the actual work?
This was, this one is actually the deposit that they paid for the material. So this is supposedly their first invoice.
Okay. I remember that coming through.
Right. Because they had asked, and then they, I don't know, maybe their accounting department isn't, but yeah, we never got it. Because the, the one that they sent a couple of weeks ago, which showed that we owe $77,000, well, we already paid different parts of it, but we hadn't paid this. And then the other one's going to be the retainage. But yeah, this will take us to being done, getting all the invoices to that. Any other questions on this? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Done. And the other one is just the retainage amount, which they don't break it up. Final invoice is what they call it. So I'll make, and that was dated September, but they hadn't finished the work yet, so. I'll make a motion that we approve Sunburst invoice number 22637, dated September 26, 2023, for the work on the level spreader at Johnson School, behind Johnson School, and the amount of $3,658.25.
I'll second that.
So we got a second. Again, this is the final invoice. They say final invoice on it and this was an amount that we had agreed that would be kind of like a retainage until they were finished. Any other questions on this?
Closes this.
Closes it out. Yep. Any other questions on this? Comments? Discussion?
No, Nancy, I can show you why I think the audit is in process. I found the document, but if you want, if I could share my screen?
Well, can we finish this?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. I apologize.
Yeah, so we'll finish this invoice and then unless it's pertinent to that. So all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to do the budget after this one's done. So then you're going to stop and she's going to share hers. You might need to make the thumbnails come down a little bit and do that. So I don't know if we see the whole page, but what's, is this saying, what's it saying? Can you scroll it or if you want us to see all of it?
Sorry, I didn't realize I was muted. I'm talking away. This is the actual technical core, which is where we file all the paperwork for the Office of School Construction. And if you look, this is Johnson School and says that the audit is in process. So I'm assuming, and similar documents in Rockwell, I'm assuming that it is, but I, they haven't communicated directly with us at the district level. This is what I was meant when I said that I've seen it in the system.
Okay, yeah, all right. Well, thanks for that. So that way you could kind of track it in a way, you could check on it periodically?
Yeah.
Hasn't changed in a while.
I would love it if the AS actually responded to my emails.
It would be helpful. And then I had asked Evan for an updated budget report on the projects. So this is what we have.
Sure. So this is the same document that you looked at with Geraldine and then I showed it again. We had an update in June prior to the level spreader starting. So now this is added. You can see our line item that I added here in red at level spreader to Johnson School. So that is the $87,415, which includes Sunburst, original contact and change order.
Does it include SLR?
And SLRs as well. So that brought the total that we had, 700, brought it down from 790,000, 706,000 left over.
This is for the entire school project.
Correct.
Yes, because we still have that.
One of the million dollars.
Yeah, and it's still over on Rockwell and you're on Johnson. And that 40,000, which was the scope reduction thing, is that just in there as a placeholder? Is it just, we never did anything with that because we said we wouldn't because we didn't have any kind of documentation? So that's not subtracted from the, shouldn't be.
Shouldn't be though. Right, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, they never had any documentation about that. They wanted the money and then.
Now that you mentioned this, contingency was returned as part of the last payment requisition as well in March. So that should go back again as well. So let me update this again, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's, you're saying have a good look, good numbers.
Yeah, but.
So what happens when we go under budget?
So, so finance has, it's not like they handed us a bag of cash and we just keep taking some out. They take the amount that was approved at referendum and earmarked it in a, an account and they kind of keep track as invoices come in, et cetera. Now, I'm sure that since, I don't know how they do their whole bonding part because some of the stuff has been bonded, which is why we want to get, you know, we've wanted to get our reimbursement checks from Office of School Construction because then that can pay back, you know, it's like paying your mortgage off more quickly or whatever. So we're not paying interest on the bonds that we hopefully don't want to. So what, we're still waiting on the audit to be completed. So there's like say 11% or something that's being, there's an amount that's held back until the audit's done that they won't give us with reimbursement until the audit's done.
11%.
Sorry?
11%, you're correct.
Because I remember it. So we're waiting on that. Hopefully it won't take too much longer. And then if there's, and again, I don't know if finance has borrowed all that money, had bonded all that money already, or if they only bond as they need.
Basically, we'd either go back to pay down the bond or it's just not utilized.
It's not used, yeah.
But that does not get transferred to any other type of project.
No, no.
No.
And it's the same for all our projects. Sorry.
Leave, they haven't, you're correct, Nancy. They only bond as they use the money, so they wouldn't have bonded it for it.
That's good to know.
Just curiosity.
Yeah, right, because we wouldn't want them.
Or what happens, the bottom line is if you're under budget, no one says a word. Go over budget, everybody says. That was kind of why I asked the question. Either a go or.
Yeah.
Or get a bid to be a go again.
They can update it.
That's a simplistic way of working.
Good. Alright, so hopefully we get, but that's a good question, because it's, you know, each project we get to, like, in a way, when we were doing the, um, the GP room lobby downstairs, because that was ARPA funding, they had set aside, they didn't like put, put it anywhere, but they had set aside this amount. We were like seventy thousand under, cause we didn't know if we were gonna run into any hazardous materials or whatever, we didn't. So that went back into the sort of like ARPA on list of how they were gonna use it.
So it can get refunded to something.
Yes, something else, right.
Thank you.
So, sure. Alright, so I think we're done with this school project, unless anybody else has any other questions? So waiting, waiting, waiting on that audit. And so now we can look at the, where's my chat? The HVAC, Bethel High School HVAC upgrade, and I think I understand that the application has been, for the grant has been, so who wants to talk about this, Jen or Dr. Carver?
I can start this. I'm sorry?
I, I was, Jen and I talked about me taking the lead first and then kicking over to you. Uh, but you, you, if you wanna start, go ahead.
Well, I just, just generally, we did file the application last week. Um, you have access to all of the application materials, I shared it with you, I think on Monday. Um, so, and our hope is that Evan would just take you through the revised cost estimates, and then we'll see what happens with the grant application.
Yeah, so the application is actually in the shared drive that Dr. Carver created, or whoever created for the HVAC upgrade. So it's in one of the shared drives, which you could check out anytime you want.
Is, is there any timeframe, Dr. Carver, when we may hear something?
Well, they said March, um, John, but, um, I usually give it like two or three months after that. That's been, that's been the history, that they, from the past, but who knows, maybe, um, hope springs eternal and we'll hear in March.
Well, we operate at the speed of government.
Okay, so, uh, just to remind everybody of the scope of work that we are looking at for, uh, this grant application. Uh, we call these, uh, alternate number one and alternate number three, when we're looking at a greater scope of work. Uh, alternate number one is to provide air conditioning to the math and English wings of the high school. And alternate number three, which is a slightly smaller scope of work, is the air conditioning to the world language on classrooms. Uh, so, as you can see, the, each one of these is pretty much identical in their, uh, in their scope of work, um, just pointing it between the different wings of the school. Uh, so, we had our estimating group take a look, and they had contact with actual real-life installers, they got real numbers from Train. They, uh, went and verified, uh, numbers with, uh, their contacts in the construction industry. So, uh, these are real numbers that they came back with. Uh, and in comparison to the ones last year, the actual hard costs for the alternate one, price went down slightly. Whereas the price for all, at three, went ups, went up slightly. So, we kinda came in at, at the hard cost right around the same number. And then we were tasked with, uh, finding room in that budget to add a project management and commissioning, uh, line item. Um, so in that, we started looking at, uh, all these other numbers, uh, below the trade costs. Uh, we looked at our, uh, jump conditions numbers, uh, we kept in a, a little bit of premium for a phasing project, which, uh, Kohleronin, um, disputed the, uh, the need for that. Uh, they, they were not sure if that premium would be reflected in the pricing, but we felt like it was important to keep it there. Uh, we kept the, uh, overhead and profit in there, uh, we bumped up the escalation to midpoint. Uh, it was slightly low, it was, there was a concern that it was slightly low, uh, in our previous discussions, so we bumped that up. Uh, and we did keep in a ten percent owner's contingency as well. Uh, and then you can see below the line there, we backed in what we feel is a generous and realistic number for project management and commissioning, um, for the, for these two projects. Uh, and based on it being a phased project where there'd be a longer duration. So that brought us right to our, uh, four-point-one-eight million dollar number, that was the approval number.
Good. And so, just to clarify for me, knowing that this application was going in and supposedly they're supposed to let us know by March, there's some escalation figured in there, knowing that it could change up or down, could change up, so that's in there.
Yes, yes, we have, so we're looking at probably still, uh, a six to seven and a half percent escalation, uh, year over year right now in the construction industry.
Okay.
Uh, so we put in four-point-two, as that would be, uh, a little bit over half a year, so that'll bring us to midpoint of next summer.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments? I think right now we're gonna be waiting and waiting and waiting. So we can do right now.
I got a further question on the escalation, so the four-point-two is taken from a period of when? Now to...
Yes, now to the big, next summer.
Okay, so you're comfortable with those numbers that we put together now?
Yes. Okay. Like, like I said, the, the trade costs are, are real numbers that we talked to vendors and installers.
Yeah.
Uh, that's good. Yeah. And, and locally in the area.
Okay.
And another comment that Kohleronin had made is, when our estimating team talks to installers, we talk to the premium guys, these are the guys that, you know, make time for us, and they're chillingly more expensive than, uh, they're, they're the, the turnips and the gillbans, that you'll generally see a, a, a higher price point from. So, uh, Kohleronin pointed out the actual real numbers that came in last June, January, when this was put on the street, were lower, and we feel that was because the general contractors that were put out, that were responding, they are slightly smaller businesses and they tend to come in a little lower, cause they're hungry.
Correct.
Uh, whereas we're getting this, these premium numbers from...
Right.
The top guys.
Right, but we don't know, so it's good to have the higher numbers in there, whether it's going to, it's what we've seen for months and months, with so many people doing upgrades, H V A C systems, not just for schools, but other municipal buildings, et cetera, that, yeah, there's people out there that might be hungry, but at the same time, everybody's got work. So then you're gonna, alright, are we, are we gonna get prices, you know, in a public bidding process?
Yeah, and, and, yeah, Jen, we, we had this conversation, and they're pointing on actually going out onto hitting the street again, uh, early next year, and that's the right way to go, because come March, when you have to find out, everyone will, will be booked.
Right, right.
You'll be able to get in with you to do the work.
Yeah, that's a good plan.
So I just have a question again on, uh, on alternate one and three, or were they gonna be bid together separately, or how, what was, or depending on how the grant comes through, or what, what was the...
They'll, they'll be bid together. Yeah.
That's the point is, it's one contractor. Is there a chance that it's gonna end up being just one? You know, that, that it could be only alternate one gets funded?
I don't think that the, the grant is all or nothing, right? The grant is...
You're correct, Evan.
Okay, cause that, that's my concern.
Yeah, okay.
And, and you've asked for the one, the four-point-one, you either get that or you don't get anything, they don't say, here's...
Yeah, no, I, I just wasn't sure with the two alternates, that they would say, uh, we'll give you, give you one.
But I think on our end, we were looking at the two alternates for, for any reason, alternate one was significantly over, and produce scope on alternate three. I think that was one of the conversations we had with Colleen and all that at the school.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that was my thing, we, they both go over.
Figure out.
You gotta have a, a relief if, if possible. Now, is this a typical public bid job bonded the whole?
Yeah.
Yeah, that typically.
We received the grant, and we've got to put RFPs out on the street and all that, right? Yeah. And those could be ready to go. So if we get the grant, boom, they go out, get the, and we can get some people in place to do the work.
So point being, you gotta be a bondable company.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, exactly.
Yeah, there'll be, I'm sure, language in the RFP that says what we need and all like that. prevailing wage, blah, 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 all that. Yeah.
So, right, just... So right now, we're basically, of a whole pattern, at least a minimum March.
But it sounds like you need to be proactive and get this out and see...
Yeah, we wanna try to be, yeah.
What, what kind of, could be it at all?
Right, right.
And when our, our group spoke with Train, um, there are no, uh, lead time issues that they're worried about at this point in time with the units that we're looking at.
That's good. Great. Great, any other questions, any other questions up there?
Uh, just that, we'll keep you informed, not a question, a comment.
Okay, that's good.
I have a question.
Sure.
Did anybody contact EverSource on the DOAS unit?
On the way?
Say that again, John?
DOAS, so there's an incentive for the DOAS units?
Jen, am I wrong? I thought you and, um, Craig had a phone call with EverSource.
That's correct, so, John, the, the biggest incentives come when you make DOAS your primary, DOAS the primary heat source, which is not part of the design, um, that we have, so there, there are some rebates, uh, but it's not the same in magnitude. And there, the rebates are not, um, eligible for the, the grant piece, so we have to, um, it doesn't mean we can't do them, it means that we would have to, um, do the work and apply for the rebates, um, after the grant goes through.
Okay. Alright, anything, um, uh, any more on this? Or good? Good. I forgot to talk about these. We don't have to do anything with them, cause the change orders have been approved, I just have to get them signed. Right, okay. Okay, um, so that's it on the HVAC. Yay, that the action's in and we're done with that part, but I think your plan of, you know, keeping ahead of things is, is a good one and get the grant, we should be ready to go. Alright, um, the only other thing on our agenda is municipal center locker room renovation, which, uh, we're still needing to work with Park and Rec to get input from them on specifically what they're thinking. Cause the plans from however many years ago, need to get updated, but before we go ahead and do that, we really need to know from Park and Rec, what they need, what's acceptable. Peter, from Architects Guild, had said he would be glad to meet with us to take a look at are we making some changes, are we downgrading, or not downsizing supposedly the project? But, we had talked about possibly phasing it, so that we get, uh, as we applied for that steep grant a couple of months ago, but it's only gonna cover, grants are gonna cover a certain portion, we wanna have the phases put together in a way that, uh, we could get funding for it. And with that steep grant, Janice, um, from Economic Development, Chris Janik, said that, to her, it looked like most of the people that got grants already had funding in place. So once we have an idea of the plan, so we get some cost estimates we're gonna have to look at, you know, do we go and get the funding in place, or do we, you know, wait and see lots more grants, so... That's where we are with that. So as I said earlier, our next meeting is the twenty-seventh. We have to have a meeting, are people available? You could zoom in, or...
No, it's, I'm, I'm around.
I'm around.
Next week?
Not next week, uh, week after, the twenty-seventh, so two weeks. Yeah, we shouldn't need to have a meeting next week. How many meetings in a row?
It'll be Christmas Eve, I'll tell you.
Yeah, that's my, so if we have to, we can, um, we can make sure others can, people are around, oh, you're not going to Maine, Dave Olson? Smile.
Dave?
Maybe he's not here anymore, anyways, so I'll let you know, and if we're...
What's your question?
So basically, I asked you if you were going to Maine and, next week, or the week after?
I'm sorry, the dog just walked in the background, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, I, I just was joking and asking if you were going to Maine for Christmas.
Maine for Christmas?
By Maine?
Are you going to Maine for Christmas?
No.
I know.
No, we'll be home.
Yeah, I know. Most people...
Fly on Christmas Eve?
Yeah, we're com- we're, we're gonna have a meeting on Christmas Eve and, um...
Sunday night.
And drink, or something. Alright, so I think we're done. Yeah, we're done, anything else, anything else?
I'm all set.
Alright.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
You can post the time.
And, oh, and our, alright, wait, we have to play special note of, of our new donated clock to the room. So it is now, uh, seven forty-nine, seven forty-seven.
So who's second? Somebody up there seconded, Dave Olson seconded.
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, thank you, thank you everyone, thank you.